Go ahead and just start. I'm Kathleen, I'm with the La Cienega Valley Association. And I'm the PFAS subcommittee chair. I don't know quite what that is, but I'm doing my best to keep you informed about PFAS in our community. And I'm working in conjunction with the LCBA. And if you're interested, if you don't know what the La Cienega Valley Association is, it's what sign up to get back. It's a community of people just like us who come together to deal with all sorts of issues that come up in our community. And also just to build community. We actually have a breakfast every other month and our cook happened to have shown up here. So it's just the idea that with community, we really are stronger. Our voice is a collective voice. The concerns are many because of our situation with water in the West is tenuous. And then you're probably aware of the wastewater treatment plant. So PFAS is what brought this community into being and this meeting tonight. Not the La Cienega Valley Association, but the PFAS meeting. Does anyone here not know anything about the water situation? Or is it news, kind of new? Anyone else where, okay, new? Okay. Raise your hand. You're kind of new to this, you know, so there's like five or six people who really -- okay. So you're going to hear more about it, but I'm going to read some back history here. If you have not signed up and you're interested in being on the email list, there is a place to do that on the back. And you're not signing on to like do anything other than to receive emails and updates about what's going on through the La Cienega Valley Association. So you'll hear about the breakfast, you'll hear about the latest news, the community plan, PFAS, and different things. So I encourage you to do that if you're interested. A little bit of backstory about the water contamination. Here's our wonderful president put this together. Andrea. Okay, so the mid 2005, the National Guard, a lot of this polyfluorocarbon PFAS, they're real chemists in the room, but they're basically a plastic sort of based contamination that does not eliminate from the body. So they build up in the body. They are not good to drink or eat, and you're going to hear a whole lot more of that. But they're also, they are very good at suppressing fire. So they were used and very commonly used for a long time. And then 2005, the National Guard, which is right up the road, I imagine near the airport, there was a truck that had this PFAS brought up. Plain retardant, thank you. Plain retardant in it. And it had to be disposed or somehow mysteriously, it would wash out, I'll just say, it would wash out the fire trucks. Okay. That had the fire fighting the film. So they would go fight fires wherever, or they would do exercises there and then they would wash out the trucks there. So this chemical leached out through the water into the La Cienega Valley, La Cienega community, and possibly into the river. That's all being determined now. I don't want to overspeak. In April, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit. So it's the source of where perhaps the contamination started is the airport National Guard area. April, but meanwhile, the government was finding out that these are really not safe in the drinking water anywhere around the world, and they are truly all around the world. April 2023, very recent, last year, no, very recent. Public officials from city and county meet at the Army National Guard facility. It's the first disclosure of, aha, the National Guard, yes, there are PFAS detected through the testing that they did in sort of like test wells, I guess. I don't know how, but there's a term for it. So there's the first time there's evidence that indeed these PFAS are in the water. October, the National Guard released a report and put Army National Guard into remedial phase. So they're doing more well sampling. As far as I know, we're still in the part of well sampling, determining really the source of the PFAS. January of 2024, very recent, the county hires PFAS Community Outreach Liaison, Shelley Mellor, who's the rest of the back. And she's working with our county commissioner, Commissioner Bustamante, because it was so overwhelming when this news came in that we really needed help as a community. Andrea was overloaded as our president's La Cienega Valley Association because there was so much that we needed to deal with the county, the state, EPA. And from that, this task force was coming to me. February 6th, sent out a big letter to all the government agencies that I just named. The governor got one, the EPA, federal level, state level, county level, city level. Everyone was invited and told in no unclear terms that we are aware of this is happening. We have enough evidence to know that we have been, our water's been contaminated with PFAS. And we'd like to know what and how everyone's going to help us with this. And I'm going to kind of just, that's where we are basically. Let's see. We had a great, we've had several meetings, a town hall meeting at Santa Fe Community College. 250 people showed up to learn more about what's going on, what are the effects, why are we worried about PFAS in our water? How do we filter our water? What are the health effects? Tonight, we have someone from the New Mexico Department of Health who is, can talk more about the actual health effects of PFAS. Something, so one of the things that came up, and I'm just jumping through here, but as we all discovered, I got a phone call from my neighbor saying, my well is one of the ones that the county, after hearing all this information, the county who is not responsible for cleaning our wells, but stepped in to do some sample testing. They did, you know, so that they strategically mapped about six wells, and my neighbor was one of them, and indeed he had high PFAS count. And he called me up to say, don't drink your water, which is not what anyone wants to hear. So I immediately got a well checked, mine well checked, and so I'm from a certified lab, which anyone here, we'll talk about that another time. And indeed, yes, there were PFAS in my water as well. So the thing that has come up for so many people is that it's very expensive to get your water tested at a certified lab. I mean, I'm saying very expensive, it's about $500. So it's all relative, but it's a chunk and change. And then the, to remediate, what kind of filtration, what, there's so many things out there. What works for PFAS, what doesn't? And this technology has changed radically. The EPA has gone from, you know, it's okay to have this many PFAS in your water. And within one year, they're like, no, it's really only okay to have this much. There's radical shift. So the technology signs are all catching up with really what are the health effects of PFAS in water. So a lot of our work lately has been about trying to keep in communication, find out about, you know, are they, are they ever going to come around to like cleaning up the PFAS contamination site? Yes, hopefully, but that feels still, people can talk about that more, but it's in the future. It's in process, but it's very slow process. So what we're trying to do, and part of that is where there's a grant that Santa Fe County, it's called the H R E E grant. And it's a, it's still open and please apply for it. If you qualify, you can get well testing and filtration for your house, as well as a bunch of other home improvements. You know, you can't just like remodel, but things like new windows, leaking roofs, things like that, those are all situations. So it's H R E E, it's Santa Fe County. Pardon me?
No.
So what, so what you're going to want to do is go to the lascienegavalle.com website
or go to the Santa Fe County, newmexico.gov website, there's, which are listed here. Those are going to have all the resources you need about well testing, filtration. You'll see if there's the actual timelines put on there with a bunch of resources if you want, or if you link to all the documents and information that we have, but there's just a ton of resources that are up now.
And the H R E E is online.
Yeah.
You definitely, and you must apply online. If you need help, there is someone who can assist if you don't have a computer.
That information's on the website. Also though, that is an income-based program.
Yes.
And it's first come, first served.
Yes, first come, first served. They've got a stack of them already in there. So I really encourage you to apply. And this, you know, and when it says income-based, I was pretty amazed. It seemed fairly below the middle. Yeah. Below the middle. I mean, it wasn't, you know, you're senior citizens, like, you know, you might be, a lot of people could qualify. The other caveat for it is that you must own, you don't have to own the home, you're the owner of the home. So if you're renting a house, your renters need you to apply for this if you need it so that they can have good water. They can't do it themselves. They can't initiate the process. But that's all on the, the website, the Santa Fe County and the La Cienega Valley, both of them, I think I just put in a search because I couldn't remember, I put Santa Fe County PFAS. And that was there. So if you really don't remember, it's really easy. And the name of the loan is H R E E. And that's again, on our website, you'll see it everywhere. So I really encourage people.
It does cover tests, the well testing and filtration costs if you are eligible.
Right. So that's where we are today. And I'm happy to talk about any of this filtration just as a neighbor because I've been through it and learned a lot. I'm already changing my first canister of my first, you know, filter tube and sort of terrified of it, but anyway, happy to share that after meeting. Okay, updates. I don't have any, well, you can have a.
What about trying to encourage people to get like one well tested among a group of houses in the area? The chances are it's going to be the same acronym.
No, it's really why we have immunity. Right. If you're, you know, I went ahead and tested, but if you're, if you have three neighbors and you're in close proximity, go all together and get one well tested. The thing about what I've learned, it's like, that's, that's the best you can do, do that. However, the way the water works, my neighbor's numbers were way different than mine because his well's a different depth than my well. It's an older well. Like, you know, there's so many factors. 20 feet can make a huge difference. So if you can get your water tested, you know, filtered, to me is the most important thing. If you have to go, well, I have, I have $1,200 that I can scrape together. I'd say like get a filtration system on your house rather than test your water, especially if you know neighbors around you have had bad results. There's also inexpensive filters, which will talk, there's, I'm happy to talk to anyone about that just to get started. But I mean, really, it's like $50, you know? So yeah, there's, we've had, there's great YouTube on here, the guy that's in April. In April, there's a YouTube listed on the lascienegavalle.com website. Watch that, it's all about filtration, right here in this room. And he went through everything. I missed the meeting and watched the video and it was so informative.
And I'd like to thank David Craig for filming so far all of the meetings.
Is that David? Thank you, David. I didn't know that. I thought you were a doctor back then. I watch too much, you know?
All right. I may tell him the stuff, but the key is what you folks are saying.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it was great. It was so informative because like I said, I couldn't do it. So Shelley. Updates. Yeah. Do we have any more questions?
One before, I'm sorry. Because I am trying to figure out what is the lab we're supposed to use because I have some friends or neighbors, they were using the Amazon thing. And I didn't want it up for my well, but I can't find it on the website, what is the lab?
It's a list of certified labs. It's a, it's a button. If you go to the San Fe County.
I am here, that's here, yeah.
I'll show you. If, if you're on the, or you're on the La Cienega website, I don't know where it is there.
Yeah.
You go to the San Fe County.
Yeah, I'll take down the main one.
Yeah. Go to the Santa Fe County, you can just view the whole Santa Fe county PFAS. And it'll show up. And you'll come to the page and there's these buttons and one of them is certified labs. And you click it and you'll be on PDF and it's all the labs that have been certified by the Mexico Environment Department to test for PFAS and other water contaminants. So when you look at the list, make sure you look for what type of contaminant that particular lab tests for. And Santa Fe or PFAS. Yeah, they're like all of these. After the meeting, I can, I can.
We can also tell you just as neighbors, some of the labs that we know who tested them. So for instance, one that I know a lot of people use is Indep.
Yeah, Santa Fe.
For Santa Fe. And it's, it's better if they collect the sample than you because a lot of times you can actually accidentally contaminate your sample when you're collecting it. So just have somebody go.
Yeah, it was interesting because when I did it in November, it was through Hall's, when you get that list, it's overwhelming, but that's the entire state. So make sure when you're looking, it's like Santa Fe County.
Yeah.
But I used Hall's research, environmental research in Albuquerque, were of the two, they were listed. And they were fine, and I know they work with the county and they work with the EPA. Everyone says good things about them. But he said, oh yeah, just come and we give you the containers and go to your tap. I'm like, I'll just go to my tap? He said, yeah, just go to your tap and pitch and tap and fill them up. And that's all I did. And then I delivered them and I marked them and I drove them down that day. But everyone else was like, there's no chain of custody. Indep, from what I've heard from everyone I've talked to, they will do the test. They, they come out and manage it. So if it ever was to go and be used evidence, you know, in legal case or something, it was not my concern at that point. But it'll, it'll have that clear chain of, you know, properly handled, not the immediate sample. Sample, yeah. So I'm, I'm sort of like Indep, same price, like they're in Santa Fe, so that, those two, I would say.
Yeah. And there was at least one resident who told me that it turned out that it was the kind of piping they had installed in their house that was giving them a false positive. So they ended up replacing their piping and then they came out with a clean result.
Exactly.
So that's another reason why having somebody who kind of can look at it, which, you know, does some people that up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing, just to let you know, is it does take a few weeks to get the results. So it's not immediate.
Right.
Does the county do anything to get the information from these tests in order to track the flume of the PFAS?
I got to speak to that, yeah. So I'm just going to give a face and a face that I provide are from all the entities that are working together basically to address this contamination through various methods. So Santa Fe County, they received a grant from the Environment Department to do a study to characterize the contamination and really determine, is there a flume and where the flume's located? So right, so the process for doing that is they put out a call for proposals to have people, you know, or companies who know how to do this, apply to receive the funds to do this work. And that process is done, they narrow it down to two consulting companies who are, I've heard, I don't know who they are, I'm not a member of any of them, but they're highly qualified, they're being interviewed actually tomorrow, and then a recommendation will go to the Santa Fe County Commission in August. So hopefully those people will be, you know, hired and that work can start hopefully in September. And yes, their work is to characterize if there is a flume, right? We don't really know, but yeah.
And I think this question was about whether we're, the county is trying to collect the results that are of the labs.
Um, you know, not at this point. Will it be a part of that project? Maybe, but they're, that's complicated. I mean, people have to be willing to share their results. And yeah.
You can provide, if you want to, you can provide a copy to us to keep it in the file. And that way we kind of have a, we're keeping our own tally on kind of where we're seeing positive PFAS results as well, just to be able to give general information about areas.
Would be the LCBA, Andrew?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that was the update around that work. Okay, the home, the H R E E program that we were talking about earlier, that's a grant program. It actually stands for home rehabilitation, energy efficiency. So the whole purpose of this project, it's countywide, only in the county, city residents, Espaola, Edgewood, they do not qualify. So it's literally people who live in the county. And it's really to help people bring their homes to be more efficient. So that's the grant program. So that's why people like, if they want to improve the efficiencies, they're getting new windows, or getting new roofs, or putting in solar, or something along those lines that qualifies as a potential, something they can potentially get funds to do. And it was a program that was already going to happen, but then this PFAS contamination came about and so they actually added, that is one of the things that people could apply for funds for, which is to, and not just for PFAS, for any kind of contaminant in your water, that you can apply for funds to test your water for PFAS and arsenic and whatever else you want to test for. And then once the results are there, the grant also pays for filtration. Go ahead, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, depending on where you're, you may be in Santa Fe County.
Right. Yeah. You're right. It's like the very southern, southern tip. Credit your act? Yeah, okay. And then, what's there going to else to say about this? So when you apply for these funds, if it's granted, you don't just get a check. So there is a process. So the county has vendors that they'll use to come out and test your water or whatever, you know, come assess whatever it is that you're asking for funds for. And, and then if everything looks like, yes, this, this fits the bill, then they also hire the contractor, but you have to say who that contractor, whoever that is, is going to do the work. So I just wanted to clarify that piece because that's a common question they're getting. And then I wanted to give you an update on the numbers. So they've had, so they started taking applications on June 4th, and they've received 245 applications. Remember, this is countywide. And of those, they have like one staff that's dealing with all of this, but they're getting ready to contract it out to have somebody help them so they can move faster. But 38 have been, are qualified and they're actually in the inspection phase. Of these applications, 25 have been for remediation around water. And of those 25, 15 were for PFAS and they were from this area. So there are people who are applying. Yeah. So that, that's what I just wanted to share with you.
Also, you don't have to repay. It's a grant. So you don't have to pay it back. It's up to $50,000, but if you qualify for it, it's free money. Apply. And if you don't qualify, you don't qualify.
Yeah. And I just want to reiterate what Kathleen said is that it's an online application process. It's very specific on what kind of documents you have to have. And there is a number there that you can call and somebody will help you fill out that application if you did. And, did you want to say something? I was just going to actually ask, can we just also ask if there are people here who always speak Spanish?
Hay personas aquí que hablan solamente español? Hablo español y poquita.
Okay.
In el futuro, ojalá tenemos una persona que pueda hablar español también.
Yeah. That was going to be the next thing I said. I don't know if you even heard this, Andrew, but here we will provide a translator for future meetings. And we just couldn't get it organized in time for tonight. We tried, but you know, they have somebody that they work with and they have the equipment. So next meeting, which is in August, we will have translation. So this is going to stay.
So por el próximo. Ya.
Yeah.
Tenemos una persona que habla español también.
And, okay. Okay. So the city of Santa Fe, this is an update about some work that the city of Santa Fe is doing. They are doing some sampling of the soil and the water around, so the wastewater treatment plant. And they wrote up a whole sampling plan. They got approval from the Environment Department at the end of June. They, there's seven monitoring wells around the wastewater treatment plant, and they will be sampling those, that water every quarter for the next year for PFAS. And there also going to be one soil sample. And the person who's under contract to do that work will come to this meeting in August and will explain all of that to you. They already took one water sample at the end of June and those results will be in. So she'll be able to share with you what they found with their first water sample that they took in August. And we will have translation then, so let others know. And let's see, yeah. Any questions about that? That's that update. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. I think she asked. Oh, I, I'm not very good at Spanish. Although, solo un poco.
Pero para ayudarles si necesitan soy de Chile, el país de su América. Pero aquí primeramente voy a estar yo. La gente necesita, no puedo ayudar.
And then finally, I'm also communication with the National Office of the Army of National, the Army National Guard, the National Office that oversees not only the Army National Guard for the, for Santa Fe, but they oversee like seven others. And they are the ones sort of doing the remediation investigation about the PFAS that they already found stemming from the Army National Guard here in Santa Fe. And they don't have any new updates. Everything's still in to get approved from the Department of Defense. But one thing I, I always share is that they are in the process of not only doing a remediation investigation for Santa Fe, but for seven other sites in the country under this one section. It's like section nine or anything there. I don't even know how many sections there are. But it's a national problem, right? If they're finding PFAS contamination, you know, all over the world, all over the country. It's common here, Air Force bases. Camden Air Force Base has found a lot of contamination over in Clovis. It's called as Holland Air Force Base down south in near, I'm blanking.
Almagorda.
Almagorda, thank you. Whoever said that. So yeah, so that, that's it. Oh, and I have invited them, supposedly that program manager's coming back to Santa to Santa Fe in September. And I invited him to come to our September meeting. It hasn't been confirmed, but hopefully they will. If you're a town, the clock, but he's just not sure. Everything's going to be in place for that. So, let's see, you asked me to give a couple of other updates. I think, no, I think you already given a, so I think we're good. Just again, my email address is there on the board. I don't know if Shelley might want to write her email up there. So the Valley, all I'll say is the Valley Association has been working in coordination with the county to get information such as this meeting to residents. Oh, yeah, each meeting is topic specific. So because it's such a huge topic, you know, the, I think, like the first meeting was about filtration. The second meeting, we actually had an update on the H R E E program. Those are available through our website links if you want to watch the meetings that you made. And then this meeting is on health. And then, you know, each meeting, we try to select a different topic and put it somewhere where the public can access them so that we kind of keep people informed as in the court. So the other thing I want to say is that all of the materials that are created are translated into Spanish. And there was an FAQ that I created from initial questions from the community. And there's like 40 of them. And that's in English and Spanish and it's all in the Santa Fe County PFAS webpage. So, and even if you Google PFAS health impacts, you can come to like the CBC website and they usually have where you can read it in English or Spanish. So I just wanted to share that there is a lot of information out there in.
Yeah. Is the H R E E one in Spanish?
That's in Spanish as well.
So the H R E E grant is online and it's in Spanish as well.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Are you at all involved in other sources? We tried to spell PFAS like the 3M.
Should be right. That's true.
Yeah, that's everyone's, yeah. Yeah, I know about it, but I'm not associated with it.
I have a question. I saw the paper that there's a class action suit. In fact, also, is that part of the community here?
So some members of the community clearly might be part of that, but that's a separate thing. That is a national, all I know about it is it's a national class action lawsuit against manufacturers of PFAS chemicals. So that would be big companies like 3M and Neaton and things like that. And so we are not personally involved in that and really are not keeping a price for that. But, you know, some residents may be in the community involved. So I'll just let you know that. And then as far as the PFAS characterization study, one of the things I just also want to clarify is the National Guard has indicated that they actually think that their PFAS is actually contained in basically a sub-water table above the main water table. So they're denying that they're actually remarkable for the contamination. So I do want to put that out there so that you know that, even though they have admitted that they found it on their site and they know that it's in our water table. But there are many other potential sources of contamination. What the county is going to be doing is a study to identify if there are one or multiple sources and where it's coming from and where it's going. Yeah.
And another meeting, I heard mentioned that the National Guard is supposed to make their preliminary data available in the county library?
That doesn't happen? I can ask about that. They probably will. I'll ask about it.
It just seems like this is such an arduous process. And I don't know if they're all just wanting us to just turn over before we get something done.
Right, yeah. You know, they also will have a community like participation process as part of this remediation investigation. And so I, you know, I bring it up all the time with the person who I have contact with, not only when I'm asking for updates, but you know, like, let me know when you're ready to contact people and, you know, I can help with that. So it would be great if, you know, if they come here to speak, if they could tell us about also where they're putting, because I think they're putting up the information on the website somewhere. I did at one point, I came across some of their documents where you could download them. I downloaded them and I put the ones that I could on our website. But if we could kind of get them, that could be maybe the program to follow up. If they agree that, yeah.
Okay, okay. So as you've already heard, we have a special speaker tonight. And yes, thank you, this is Sri, I'd like to introduce Sri. Paladu. He's an epidemiologist and bureau chief for the Department of Health, New Mexico Department of Health. So he's going to talk to us about the health impacts of PFAS.
I do, I do know.
And the lights on.
Just, just a moment. So as you introduced, I'm Sri Paladu. I'm the bureau chief for environmental health and immunology in the Center for Health Protection for the Public Health Division of New Mexico Department of Health. I've been in this role for a little over five years. And PFAS in New Mexico was found to be an issue just the year that I started in my role. It was a concern first identified around the Clovis area, the Cannon Air Force Base. And soon after, they tested around the Holman Air Force Base and they didn't find PFAS in that area as well. But fortunately, the contamination around Holman Air Force Base is away from the people that reside on the east side of the Holman Air Force Base. But that's not the case in the known areas of Cannon Air Force Base. And now, a couple of years ago, or at least a year, year and a half, we've found PFAS to be a concern here in La Cienega area from visiting from activities that happen on the Santa Fe Airport area, okay? I'll start off with just a kind of an iceberg, your phone, your phone. I'll bring out some pans and pots. So I'll show you these different things here. You may be able to associate these, using these at your home at one time or the other. Can anyone of you take a guess which one of these has PFAS possibly? Yes, this one. So this one is a non-stick coating. Similarly, this is also considered non-stick, but it's pure ceramic. So ceramic doesn't have any PFAS. And these do, stainless steel and cast iron. These don't have any PFAS coatings. So even the PFAS that's used on these non-stick pans, is it an outright contamination if you use that? Because like you can see, it's wearing off in certain areas. The first scratch that gets on the Teflon non-stick coating will start the leaching of PFAS into the foods that we use to cook. So the best advice would be to get away from non-stick coating, okay? Thank you. I talked about the health impact and risks of PFAS in a little bit. As I mentioned, PFAS is used in all non-stick surfaces, also waterproof membrane on clothes, food wrappers, like if you have rain jackets and things like that, they have PFAS coating on them. And as Shelley mentioned and Jettie mentioned, it was used in firefighting homes. So the specific property of these PFAS is that like one end of the PFAS attracts water and the other end repels water. So when it is sprayed onto a fire, the side that it is onto the fire stops the water barrier, forms a water barrier around it and puts out the fire very quickly. So that's why it was a very good product for putting out fires and widely used before it was known to be very harmful. It's also used in airspace and automotives for like non-stick surfaces and clean areas. It's also used in some personal care products like cosmetics. So more recently, people who use makeups, they want waterproof makeups. So for that waterproofing, PFAS is one of the chemicals that are used. It's also used in veins and also carpets. Carpets specifically, like the stain resistant carpets that are used at homes. Those contain PFAS chemicals. In addition, there are varmishes, sealants that you use on wooden flooring or doors. You have to be watchful about what chemicals you use and identify all the ingredients in those if possible before you put those in your home. So what are PFAS? Like PFAS stands for fur and polychlorealdehyde substances. It's definitely a mouthful to say that. So it's not just one or two chemicals. It is a group of about 4,500 man-made chemicals. So they were used in different varieties or in different places for different purposes. And these are very durable and resistant to heat, water, grease and stains and have been used in many consumer and commercial products like I mentioned earlier. So these things have made your and my life easier over the years. So they were invented in the 1940s and their use increased over the years up until 2000. And in around 2000, they found out that some of these chemicals are really harmful. And then they started shutting down some of the bigger type of chemicals that comprise of these 4,500 compounds. So why should you be worried about PFAS? So as someone mentioned earlier, it accumulates in your body. So it builds up in living things. So some of these chemicals, they go into your body by the way of like you eating or drinking contaminated water, but there is no way for it to come out of your body. So over years, your body starts storing and storing and storing this chemical inside it and it can cause harmful effects. And also it remains in the environment, so that's why they are called forever chemicals. So unlike plants or like food waste that you dump outside in the soil that biodegrades, like some other organisms can eat on it, feed on it and then compost it and it can be used by plants again. But these chemicals are not like that. They stay in the environment forever. So when it rains, they wash out. When it blows, they move with the dust. So they remain in the environment forever. And like I said, they enter the human body and do not leave for a very, very long time. So some of the examples, like the most common known PFAS substances like PFOA and PFOS, those for the amount that it gets into your body, for your body to get rid of half of the amount, it takes about 25 years. So in your lifetime, you cannot ever get rid of the chemical from your body. So that's why these are considered very harmful to humans. And the health effects are still being studied. Like I said, there are 4,000, over 4,500 chemicals that have been manufactured. And various organizations are studying what the health effects of these chemicals could be. So far, the known effects are increases in cholesterol levels. It affects the liver enzymes and it can cause a small decrease in birth rate of babies. And also they make the vaccines. So like kids, they are required to take vaccines for like mumps, measles, diarrhea, tetanus and all those. Those are lifesaving vaccines, but these chemicals actually reduce the effectiveness of those vaccines. It can also cause thyroid disease. It's known to cause kidney and testicular cancer and also pregnancy-induced hypertension and create lapsia in pregnant women. And the cancer, so far we know specifically of kidney and testicular cancer is related to some of these chemicals, but we cannot point to a specific chemical that has known to be the effect of this particular one. For example, like if a person is diagnosed with a cancer called mesothelioma, have any of you have you heard that, mesothelioma? So as you all know, then mesothelioma, if it was identified in a human, it is 100% sure that that person was exposed to asbestos. So unlike that, these cancers and these other known effects, even though they are known to be the effect of exposure to these chemicals, we cannot pinpoint that these chemicals are the exclusive cause of those. And these chemicals actually not only change the effectiveness of vaccines, but they also affect your body immune system to fight infections as well. So that reduces the effectiveness of your white blood cells to counter the infection. So how can you be exposed to these PFAS? Basically by drinking and eating foods that are water that is contaminated with PFAS. So like I said, drinking contaminated water with PFAS, eating fish caught from water contaminated by PFAS. So as you know, the Air Force Base has discharged the firefighting homes on their property, but it leaches off their property when it rains, goes into streams and then ends up in other water bodies. So where these fish can grow and they swim in that water, they ingest that water and that also accumulates in their body. So far, there's not been much information about how much contamination of the PFAS is in the fish in this state. Recently, like just about a week ago, EPA issued a new order asking all the states and tribes to start monitoring the levels of PFAS, 12 different chemicals of PFAS in fish, like in all the three states in the country. So we'll be getting more information on that. So as I said, if you know of a possible source of PFAS contamination around a water body, it's better to avoid fishing in that water body. So you can also be exposed to the PFAS by accidentally swallowing or breathing contaminated soils. Like I said, when wind blows, the dust rises. So if there's a dust storm happening in the area and the dust seems to be coming from around the Santa Fe Airport area, which is possibly the known source of contamination in this area. So try to avoid going out in that situation. Also, eating food, meat, dairy and vegetables that are produced near the places where PFAS was used or made. Not only just that, but if you use your water that you know has contaminated PFAS and you use that to do a home garden and grow vegetables in your house, those plants also accumulate PFAS in there. So it's not advisable to consume those vegetables or plants that you grow using contaminated water. PFAS has also been used in packaging materials like for food to propel the water, like if you see any wrappers, the old wrappers, they had like an aluminum coating on one side and that non-stick kind of surface on the other side, which was a paper in the center. So those ones in, before 2004, they all had PFAS coating on the inner side. So if you had possibly eaten many of the fast foods in those days, that could have been one of the sources of exposure. So some special exposure considerations. There are two groups of people who might be exposed or who might be at a higher risk. One is children, because children, they could be drinking formula which has been made using PFAS contaminated water. So for the amount of water that they consume using the formula and their body weight, it's a large amount. So their risk of exposure to these PFAS is much higher. And also drinking breast milk from persons exposed to PFAS. Say for example, if the mom has been exposed to PFAS over the years, PFAS is known to be transmitted through the breast milk. That being said, I'll advise, and also there's another slide on that, that breast milk is still. That breast milk is still considered the best source of nutrition and protection for the babies. So it highly uh takes up the risks of PFAS in comparison to the protection that it offers. Uh and the other group that is also at risk are the workers who are involved in making and processing of PFAS and PFAS-containing materials. So over the years, unknowingly, people have worked in this industry which either made these PFAS chemicals. Or use these PFAS chemicals in making various products. So those workers are also a special risk of uh exposure. So going back to the uh PFAS and breastfeeding. So do PFAS enter breast milk? Yes, PFAS enters breast milk, but it is, like I said. The amount of PFAS that poses the risk through breast milk far outweighs the benefits the breast milk can provide to the child. So it is always advised to uh to continue breastfeeding. So should you have breast milk tested for PFAS? The, the testing for PFAS has improved quite a bit. But the way breast milk is expressed, it can or cannot give an exact picture of the amount of PFAS. That is present in a particular sample of breast milk. So in spite of uh the tests being advanced, uh you wouldn't want to be spending that money on testing breast milk. And should you continue to breastfeed? So with, like I said, with numerous protective health benefits, breast milk continues to be the ideal nutrition for infants. And clinicians can assess like your, uh you can advise the person who is breastfeeding to talk to their doctor to make the right decision. Uh there could be other factors affecting the individual, whether they can breastfeed or not. Sometimes it's the infant that can possibly not take the breast milk because they might have an allergy to the breast milk. In those instances, it's uh okay to avoid the breast milk, but otherwise, if there is no, no issue. It is always advisable to have the infant get the breast milk.
You want to pose questions for the end?
Yes, thank you. So talking to your healthcare provider. So what, one thing I want to point out here is that nearly everyone in United States has some amount of PFAS in their blood. Because of how widespread these PFAS chemicals were since the nineteen forties to the two thousand year. Uh it has been found in uh in almost every individual that was tested. So if you look at this in ninety-nine and two thousand, this is a study that is called, that is called the NHANE cycle. Uh the data is from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Uh in two thousand, uh the PFAS levels for PFOS, PFOS, uh they were very high. But in around two thousand three, they stopped the use of this chemical totally. The manufacturing was stopped, the use was stopped and everything. So over those years since two thousand three onwards, the levels in humans have decreased over the years. Similarly, the second known chemical, the PFOA, even that was also about five micrograms per uh per liter. And that also started to come down over the years. And this data, the latest data is from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So things that you can ask your doctor, I'm here to not provide any medical advice or anything. But it's up to you and your uh healthcare provider to decide what is best for you. So can exposure to PFAS cause problems? So yes, it, it can cause problems, but there is no way to tie up your health problems to this particular chemical. Like I said, asbestos is known to cause mesothelioma. Rayon gas is known to cause lung cancer. Cigarette smoke is known to cause lung cancer. But PFAS cannot be tied to one particular health condition. So should your family and you be tested for PFAS in your blood? It may give peace of mind to know that there is no PFAS in your blood or if the PFAS amount is low. But really like there is no other advantage of knowing how much PFAS is in your blood than to just know that number at this time. Because there is no test that can tie up the amount of PFAS that has been detected in your blood to any health condition. You might be at risk. And also, the testing is not very cheap. Like for water itself is about five hundred dollars to test the water. In blood, to run the gamut of testing for about twenty-five PFAS chemicals, it runs the order of like four hundred dollars. And no insurance covers it, Medicare doesn't cover it, Medicaid doesn't cover it. So it has to be out of pocket. So these are the questions you can discuss with your health provider. Uh and how will the exposure PFAS in drinking water affect my pregnancy? So like I said, it can cause a small decrease in birth weight of the baby. But other than that, there is uh not much known at this time uh to, to relate PFAS to the uh pregnancy. So what can you do? Basically, you need to reduce your exposure to PFAS going forward. Until now, people have not known about this chemical. But once you know, the best thing you can do is to avoid your further exposure to these PFAS chemicals. Like I said, some of these chemicals remain in your body for a very long time, but over the year, that reduces. If you do not get exposed on an ongoing basis, there is not that additive effect in, in your body. Say for example, you had about ten milligrams or ten micrograms of a chemical in your body. If you stop your exposure today, that only goes down from now on, it won't increase. So, so does the health effects related to that. So the best thing for being known to have PFAS in water in this area. The best thing would be to use only filtered portable water for drinking and cooking. So as uh mentioned, it's always best to invest in a filtration system than to test your water. Whatever the money you put in, it's better to get that filtration system rather than to go for test of the water. Eventually, the organization that's trying to do the remediation will find out. The few may like uh do some measures to reduce the PFAS in the groundwater. But until then, it is best for you all to get that filtration done at home. Uh avoid using contaminated water for home garden. I know it's very expensive to filter the water for using for irrigation and home garden purposes. So minimize that uh usage of water, try to find some organic sources, use uh different methods of uh. Growing plants inside the house, smaller herbs, try to buy uh foods from outside. I know like organic foods are really expensive, but growing the foods using contaminated PFAS water. Contaminated with PFAS is also harmful. So for uh exposure to dust particles, uh advice would be to use HEPA air filtration, filtration systems inside the house. To reduce uh PFAS in the air. And like I said in the beginning, avoid using non-stick cookware. And also avoid eating fish from non-contaminated water bodies or areas where there is contamination that is known. And what is being done in terms of the agencies? So these are the federal agencies that are working on PFAS issues. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. The US EPA or United States Environmental Protection Agency and the National Institute for Operations Safety and Health. And they are investigating PFAS in the environment. They conducted exposure assessments in communities and also performing uh health studies. So CDC uh is currently conducting a health study in seven different areas of the country. Uh these areas were chosen based on the amount of people that were exposed. To a known source of contamination which was close to an Air Force Base uh in the country. And they are following these people for five years. They have done blood testing, they have followed up with questionnaires, multiple questionnaires about health conditions of people. Uh and also tested the water, the food, everything in the area. And they have been followed for uh last four years. They are currently in the fourth year of the study. In twenty twenty-five, the study will end. At the end of the study, CDC will perform their full analysis and publish their findings. And the other agencies will continue to follow up or probably build on this uh study that CDC has performed. So now I'm open to taking any questions, but I'll first say, after this meeting, if you still have any questions. Do not hesitate to reach the New Mexico Department of Health hotline. This is the number eight three three seven nine six eight seven seven three. And ask for a call back from an epidemiologist on call. So one of my team members, most likely it will be me or another colleague of mine. That will be addressing any questions related to PFAS. So please do not hesitate, even if you have any questions later on, after this session is done. You'll get the light second.
There's a couple of questions that we hear over and over again, President, and one of them is about, is it safe to shower? With water that you can't make it through PFAS stuff, you got all those questions?
Sure, yeah, so like I said, PFAS has thousands of chemicals. There are some PFAS chemicals which are like small chain chemicals which could be absorbed through the skin. But those chemicals are equally fast to be uh getting rid of from your body. So those chemicals don't really cause any harm. So basically, the chemicals that cause harm cannot be absorbed through your skin. So it's okay to have showers with the water that is contaminated with PFAS. As long as you don't put that in your mouth. That's where kids have to be watched.
What about your eyes?
So eyes definitely is, is a source, it's a mucous membrane that can be readily absorbed. Uh avoid swimming in water that's known to be contaminated with PFAS. But regular showering, most people, I'd say, don't keep your eyes open on, open long enough to be a potential risk for that. Yes, sir.
Is your department having plans to do widespread blood testing?
So we, we don't currently have a plan for widespread, widespread blood testing, like I said. Because knowing the amount of PFAS in blood, there is no additional benefit. Of saying, okay, like this individual's condition could be tied to this amount of PFAS. So that, that's why we don't have any plans right now from our department to do widespread testing.
So indeed, we are so worried about the PFAS in the world. But there are no connection we can say, oh, you get this correct because you are drinking PFAS while we are working. After these many years, you know, you say, we can prove this person is safe with cancer. Because she was exposed to the wind who blew the PFAS. Or I was cooking with petrol skill for thirty years for Sesa. Yeah, so it is a little concerning.
So it's not a combination, but like I said.
What is the amount we can handle? What is the amount that was found here?
We, we don't know, exactly, yes. So each person in this room itself is different, right? So my body may not be able to handle ten micrograms of the chemical. But somebody else, even though they have worked in that particular industry, could not have been like exposed or have any health issues. So that, that is why I say it's hard to say that the cause for a particular person's health condition is from PFAS. It does possibly tie, but there is no way to say.
We don't know if that person died because.
We don't, we don't have that much information yet. Like I said, it's been studied, like I've mentioned, CDC has been studying the effects. So possibly over years, we'll know more about that.
This is like what we used to have with smoking before we figured out.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, cigarettes were considered a cool thing, everyone was using cigarettes. But it took years for them to link up uh lung cancer to cigarette smoke, so.
Is it possible to pass individuals that about who had cancer, for example. That may be working in that area and start something, studying with that? At least if we are starting while instead of, we don't have enough information, we can start game with somebody.
So definitely, like, yeah, we, we've already initiated that uh effort. Like we work with the New Mexico Humor Registry, uh out of University of New Mexico. Uh which gathers all the information about cancers in the state. So with what we do as part of that group is we look at the amount of cancer in a given community. And see if there are identified possible sources or causes of that particular cancer. And if there is an added burden in that community in comparison to a county or the state as a whole. So if there is an increased number of cancers in a community compared to the state, then yes, there could be some, something else. That is happening in that particular community. So that is what we are trying to identify. We, we just got a request, I, I forget the name, but somebody emailed uh our tumor registry and I got that email this morning. So, so we will be pursuing that pretty soon. Not yet, like we, we have to conduct the analysis, we have to get the findings and after that, then we can share it with the public.
No, for this, you know, I don't think we actually did that, so yeah, so we, you know, this is news to me, so it's.
Yeah, it was just this morning, so.
It's a tumor registry, right? So when you have cancer, it's automatically put there. So they're using basically secondary data, data that's already there. And they're going to analyze like, you know, oh, there's, you know, there seems to be a cancer cluster in Las Vegas. And oh, what else might be going now and there, oh, they, I mean, I'm just saying, right? But they also have known PFAS contamination, right? So could there be an association versus the uh other areas that may have, that don't, that have PFAS? I don't even know, how would they compare that, right? So there was, because I still don't see how they could really tie that directly to PFAS.
Yes, it, it still can be tied directly to PFAS, but if the burden of cancer in a community is higher in comparison to the county or the state. Then there's, there is something else happening in the contract, right? That, that could all be. Exactly.
Would you have to be conscious of the people with any statistics, uh you could have it all.
Yeah, I mean, it's just so challenging. The other thing I want to say that you sort of touched on is that, just to put it in a different way, is that even. Just because you've been exposed to PFAS, even if you do a blood test and you have it in your blood, doesn't mean you're going to have an adverse health. Um impact from that.
Yeah.
There, there's so many factors that can go into somebody having an adverse health uh impact or outcome from the exposure to PFAS. Or something else like age and your general health and um, you know, there, you know, social determinants, there's just a lot of factors. So it's not, just because it may be like gasoline in your water, it doesn't mean that you for sure are infected due to it, right? Um and that sort of goes back to what you were saying, if there's so many unknowns, why are we worried? And I think there's, I'll get you, I think there's um, everybody has their own personal level of risk and their own personal level of concern. And so when they find out it's in my water, if it, and they know that this has been tied to some adverse health impacts. And that means something to them, then they are going to make an effort to do something about it, they'll do their water, basically, right? Or somebody else, and I've talked to other people who are just like, you know, whatever. And they're, but they're moving on, sort of, so, yeah. Could you, when I say, oh, I was just going to say, could you talk a little bit about what the, the levels that the Environmental Protection Agency has established for PFAS are? Because I think a lot of people here may not know that.
So, so those, those information, I think you shared, I didn't.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out, yeah, so.
So there, there have been, I don't remember off the top of my head, there are six types of chemicals of PFAS that US EPA has set standards for in drinking water. They have established those guidelines for public water systems. So public water systems are required to test the water and make sure that the water that they're supplying do not have these PFAS chemicals above those levels. But for this community, we are all on private wells mostly. So private wells are the responsibility of the homeowner. So that bonus falls on you to know what the levels of PFAS are. And I just want to reiterate again, rather than testing, get the filtration system.
But there are recommendations by a certain PFAS, like PFOA and PFOS, it's like four parts per trillion, right?
It used to be seventy within one year.
Yeah, so if you do a water test, you will get results back and it will tell you your levels by the different compounds, different types of PFAS, the levels that they found in your water. So they'll say like PFOA, this many parts per trillion, PFOS, this many parts per trillion. You know, there's so many others, and I can pull that pretty quickly, but.
I think.
Anyway, let me, I'll just.
Mention hazard behaviors.
And then you can see, so, I mean, if you have two parts per trillion, the recommendation by EPA for public water systems, if you have more than four, then the public water system has to do something about that water, right? They have to figure out, they have to, for me, they have to do some sort of remediation. That's the recommendation, because something higher than part, four parts per trillion of these certain two, these two that I'm talking about, could be harmful to your health. So it's, that's why they're, so that's the responsibility of the public water system to do something. That's why those regulations read it out there, but they're only out there for six types of PFAS when there's, you know, like you were saying, forty eight hundred, I've heard like twelve thousand different kinds of PFAS, so. So why, what was the benefit, just to let them know that there is a recommendation for a level of harm, yeah. And the Mexico Environmental Department, there's an actual standard that's been established by the Environmental Protection Agency for drinking water.
I'm listening, but they're like, why, Shane, why we're saying, well, we really don't know if they're really harmful. So we're saying, oh, we need standards for these things that are air and water, that we really don't know if they're dangerous.
Well, they have been linked to adverse health outcomes, we're saying, because we don't know if people get it.
Six of these which have the standards, they are known to have established health defects that could be caused by that. So that could be caused by that.
But it's not guaranteed. Because there's like a billion other things that could cause that same condition, that's the problem. It's like saying, oh yeah, if I smoked cigarettes and I also work in, you know, a, you know, hauling, you know, things out of a mine where there's a bunch of like car, you know, carbon or something in the air, you know, there's two things that could be causing my cancer. It could be either of those two, but we don't know which one.
So are you saying, are you saying it's more like association versus established causation?
Exactly, yeah.
And then, but my question was going back to the comment about the immune system. Do we know that the PFAS depresses the immune system and that immune system depression is what causes the lack of immunogenic response to the vaccine? And do we know if it's like a ten weighted vaccine, live vaccine, what kind of, doesn't matter?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. As of now, it has affected all types of vaccines. And their effect has been reduced, because as children, you know, there are different types of vaccines that are given, right? Like four years of B oral, a ten year old vaccine, or a killed vaccine that's injected. So it has been found to reduce the immunity for both types of vaccines. First, I'll take here, she had her hand raised for a while and then I've come back.
Well, if you're doing the shelf study, if you're doing the trial design of five, or even forty years, will we know how long the PFAS has been in, whatever they found it? They don't say now, because they know that five years ago, ten years ago?
Are you being here in this area?
Well, they know that, but that's not hard to say.
So, that's hard to establish how long it has been in the environment. But the best thing would be like, how long has it been used, it has been in existence? It has been contaminated that long. So that's, that's what it can be said.
What about the ocean? Yeah, food, can we eat like saltwater fish or?
As of now, you know, as of now. Yeah, as, as of now, PFAS is not a cancer in the ocean, yeah, because as you know, pollution, right, it's huge amount of water. And the amount of PFAS that's being discharged, going into the rivers, and rivers ultimately draining to the ocean. So it has not been established that the fish that have been caught from the ocean are a source of potential cancer, yeah.
So the saltwater isn't leach, because it's pretty plastic fluids you're reading about, you know, the floating off.
No, uh, those are.
If it's full, it's like a little water, it's a little filtered water.
It's not water, you like this?
I have no points at all.
What do you have to, to call you? Is it, you know, if we have a very high level of PFAS in our wells here, it's where, would be very, if we ask the city, come on, we need polluted water, we need, you know, water, what we're giving to you is safer.
Well, who would be asking the county, first of all, who lives in the county?
Well, that's why we do that, it's the ultimate.
Well, but there's, there's been some talk of that, but you know, it's, there's a lot of resistance in this community to going off of wells. And if the county sends water, they will require residents to come off of their wells and stop using wells. So at this time, and given the fact that it's going to take years and years, many years, probably at least ten years to remediate or even start remediation of PFAS in the water supply, we are recommending to residents that they get a filtration system on their well. That is the main recommendation, but you can test, if you have the ability to test first and, and you want to do a test and see, we just recommend that you do periodic retesting because as you know, it's in a water source which is moving. So, you know, you may want to get an annual test for PFAS or something like that, just to check your level. So that's our recommendation from us as community, we're residents too, so we're just.
Yeah, I, I think the most fear we have is because the city will, you know, lack our well and say, oh, you have polluted water, you can't use the water in our well, yeah, I think that's the big issue. But if you filter, you know, what we are going to do with our water, just to filter. So as everybody that filters our well, how many gallons we are going to own outside to get good water in one gallon? Our vegetable, I want vegetables like this. Nice tomatoes, nice apples, like now I found out, oh, whatever you eat through your garden is contaminated. So hello, what I can do with my well, what?
It's like, so you have to live on filtered water.
That, all that, that would be fair to all the water.
And also know that there's whole house or under the same filtration. You can filter at point, yeah.
Yeah, I, I got the filter for blinker.
But you would still have to.
But I can't say anything, you know.
So, good question, and something I had a resident asking was, so if I get a filter on my well and I want to irrigate my vegetable garden, do I need to replace my soil? Somebody asked me that. And that's a good question, I have no idea.
And yes, yes, so.
The other thing you can do is.
That is what we have suggested, because we have tested some soil samples around the Harlem Air Force Base, because there were only about four houses that were near the flue of the PFAS contamination. And those four individuals, they were not using their water for cooking or drinking, because it had too much sediments in the water, because they are shallow well. But that individual was using it for, you know, your home garden. So when we tested the soil, soil had PFAS in it. Over the years of you using the water, you had brought up the contamination and now your soil is also contaminated.
Yeah, because our community raised vegetables in the town, and we buy from them. I love to buy, you know, from them, but.
Well, and here's the other thing, if you, if you get your water tested, it's either going to be positive or negative, if it comes out negative right now, then you know your soil right now is probably looking okay, right? So there's a lot of reasons that you may still want to get your well tested, even if you're going to put a filtration system on. So, I mean, you just have to think about that. And the other thing is, is our ASACAs, which we have three ASACAs in this community. I don't believe any of them have yet been tested to see if the PFAS has gotten into the ASACAs waters. And so that's something that we're going to have to figure out more on.
I think it was someone from the ASACAs Association that emailed for the cancer.
It could be, okay, probably Robert.
This might be a really dumb question, but if you have to remove your soil, where do you put it? What do you do?
So removal of soil is not advised right now, because, because like you can bring in some soil and lay, a, a, a layer, infallible layers, put the new dirt on top to grow your home garden. But do not take your existing soil elsewhere, because there is, exactly, you'll, you'll contaminate somewhere else. So that, that will be ultimately done when the remediation process will be begun by NBDR, National Guard, which will, they need to, that's the best possible solution.
So you can also create raised beds. So you, right, so you can even put something down if you want to put a barrier between your raised bed and the under soil and you're bringing in new soil.
That's true, the soil you're getting is a contender.
Well, that's the thing, is you're.
Buy a bag of soil, you don't know.
And we don't know if you can. Well, I think you have to do some research, but. Yeah, I'm saying, so I read, it says, yes, you can find clean organic soil, but yeah, I mean, that is a question. And then the other thing I was going to say is that, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I did some research and I created a flyer and they're not here tonight because they're with somebody, couldn't make it, but there's also recommendations of what you can do with your vegetables, you know, always wash them on leafy greens, take off the outer leaves for lettuces, for kale, to, you know, pick on the inside. There's, there are recommendations, there's also known types, certain types of PFAS penetrate the soil differently. And so if you know what is in your water, you may know what is also in your soil and it may not matter. So some PFAS affects the root, some PFAS affects the leaf. And it's all on this flyer, right? So if you really, if you really, if you grow, like I have a home garden, I didn't live up here, but yeah, I mean, there is ways that you could drill down to really try and get a sense of what you have to worry about.
I have to say one, one example, three hundred and eighty over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Compost, aren't we just recycling?
Recycling, yeah.
Passing things around? How do we know?
Refreshing. So if that food grains or things that you're using to compost already had PFAS, then yes, you are probably recycling the PFAS.
Yeah, I think it has. Well, right, but reutility has most of their, so where are they getting their?
From the city.
Does the city water have PFAS? No, so, right, so, you know, that's likely.
It is the bioaccumulation of the flue between freedom of the earth's ground, which was right here.
Right, yeah, we know it's a question of a hero, like.
But also, I mean, I have two different questions. But also, if we're having our, our septic pump and that water is, that waste is leaving this community and it's getting treated, treated, and then it's being used to water parks all in San Jose all over or golf courses. Are we then now spreading this all over that? That's my first question. And my second question is, I, I asked Green Chapter Farms, I mean, have you had your well tested? And they said, no, but our aquifer is low, that there's a lower aquifer and a higher aquifer out there. Is that true? And it has PFAS been found in the lower aquifer? Do we know that?
No, there's, there's two separate aquifers, I don't know that one's necessarily higher or lower, but there's a high water table, generally speaking, in La Cienega. And a lot of those wells are very shallow. So that is definitely something that's going to have to be looked at as part of the studies the county is doing, is to see if it's, how far that contamination goes. And as far as, I did want to also mention that all human waste contains PFAS. Okay, so our septic systems is one of the sources that's also going to have to be looked at in that study. And also, we have a wastewater treatment facility, which I personally believe to be certainly a source of PFAS that actually happens. And so, you know, I think that, and we've been putting a lot of pressure on the city already to do that testing, now they've come into a contract with the county to actually work together in, in terms of this characterization study. So I think we're making some progress, but just, you know, I think that you can really get super paranoid about it, but I think that the big overarching picture that we're getting here is that low levels of PFAS are pretty normal in everybody. And if you can stop the exposure, that's the best thing you can do for yourself. And with regard to any exposure you've had in the past, it's just, you're stuck with it one way or another, you know? So, you know, make the best of what, what we can do compared going forward. And I think that's kind of where we're trying to think, you know, how to move forward.
Is all rainwater you're carrying, PFAS? Could we collect rainwater? And you get the garden use of rainwater?
Maybe, maybe not. We don't know, I think, I'm going to read faster. And to answer your first question, I'm not an expert on septic systems, but Rob and me has great questions. And I'm really good at how much the Mexico and Latin folks, they, they're wanting to recognize that where that is begun. Because when, when you pump out your septic systems, you pump out the solids from it, not, not the liquid water. And so, yes, as she says, it definitely has PFAS. And so those are not recycled. They're not allowed to be recycled because they contain many other active materials. Yeah, actually, a septic system, the liquid is actually being discharged from the rain cage. They bring in fresh water on their tank, they pump it to your tank to make it mobile, solid, then take the entire thing out. So really, the liquid that's coming out from your home is not transported.
Okay, I don't. Okay, it is seven thirty, yeah. We can, we're. Close the meeting, Carol, do you have one quick question?
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Excuse me, you have one question, and then we'll, and then we'll be closing.
Hi, so in terms of gardening, it sounds to me like you do the thing about gardening with imported, quote, quote, good soil in a raised bed and covering it to avoid, you know, dust, with the dust, right?
If you have PFAS in your well, right, so you have to start off with that?
No, I've grown rainwater, honestly.
Which then.
Yeah, I wonder about the rainwater, that's a really good question, I'm going to see what I can learn. They say it's in the air and I, but I'll see what I can do, I then I'll give it to you. Okay, let's go ahead and.
So, like I said, do not hesitate to call on that number if you have any further questions, okay?
And thank you, sweet, for all your. All of you in La Cienega and you're interested in serving on the Valley Association Board, we have two vacancies for La Cienega specifically. So these are issues that you're interested in and you are interested in doing some community service. So if there are issues that you're interested in and you are interested in doing some community service, let us know. That's all. My notes on the board, yeah. That's right, and feel free to ask any other questions while we're cleaning up. And already tell that.